They'll have that submitted by October. The audit for Alan Jacob and Daniels should have that completed within the next couple of weeks. And that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Miller.
We got a water leak on Midway. Back this side of the old Cray's building. What Cray's he there used to be? Trapped our offside road, been running about two and a half a week down through there. Road runs right down, it was into that green right there. I've seen it a couple of times, it just hadn't crossed my mind, so. It's probably up.
Is that right before some old apartments?
Yes. Yeah, it's back this side before the old Cray's building. Yeah, sits back off the road right there.
Okay.
It's right there at the edge of the pavement. It's a pretty good stream running down through there, so.
Okay.
Good. And we've another collector's up and functioning yet, Corey.
We've got two, but two weeks ago, Deborah and Amanda, I gave them the cell tower list of chief accidents in Winter Elm God Forest. That went online, found their websites and submitted work orders to them. So anytime you have an issue with like a cell tower, you can go online and file up a work order that you're reporting a problem. So we figured, hey, let's try this and see if they won't respond to that. Well, two of them have. But the two that we need, SVA, they're the ones that stay on on Smith Road and Old Herrmann Highway. Still no response from them. So the ones that we've got, the USA, are on top of West Outer. And there's another Oak Ridge Tower, I think we're gonna go with it should, I mean, it should help.
How about the new one, they build a part more of a extension?
So that's another one. We've got a response from them, but I'm kind of waiting on that one. That's a little far out. I think that the two over in Oak Ridge may pick up. Same thing that that would, it was just a little bit more. But they did respond, the new tower that you're talking about.
But being on, but being on that grant, are we not past completion deadline on that?
So you are in the paperwork. Evan sent that last week about the final pay orders and completing that project. Now, we've got MOUs with the installers. That way we can go ahead and close that project. When we get permission from the cell towers, they will come back and get everybody installed.
So even though it's not completed, we can write it up as being finished?
Yep.
And that way we won't be the fall of them?
Right, right.
That's all I've got for this time.
There is a meeting.
Ms. Van Hooch? Yeah, Corey, I wanted to ask you regarding these letters that we received on the snowstorm violation. I'm quoting from the very first page. It has been noted that the facility failed to electronically submit the DMRs for Outfall 001 and Influence IMF1 for the monthly monenroom period of September 1 through 30th. September, or that would be 2024, as detailed in the attached violations report. Why would we not have electronically failed on them?
So that was the timeframe when you did not have an operator. It was during the Travis Pressure episode. And we were out for one month. You had your contract operations in by, I think, October, and that was the September month. Now, that's, I mean, that's that part brought up a question to me because we notified TDEC that we did not have the operator in charge and we were working on that. And Phil, you received this stuff. So that just looks like the Knoxville Field Office is not communicating with the National Field Office. Because everything was turned in like it was supposed to with the Knoxville Field Office.
Do we have any kind of equipment failure out there that would? Do we have any kind of equipment issues out there?
No. Were, I mean, were sewer overflows in the field or like historic lows?
So the big thing in that NOB was the, I think, five overflows in consecutive months. So anytime you have, I think, five, it might be four, overflows in consecutive months, they consider that an NOB. Well, the last sewer rehab project that we were doing, and it has been completed out of the Norwood area under Foxwood Circle and that area. We have not an overflow since the 1st of March. And you were having consecutive issues and, I mean, we've drastically decreased our flows into sewer plant now.
Is there any possibility, some way that we could get them to waive this? I don't know, do you call it a fine? Seven thousand dollars, is that a fine or is that?
So I've made phone calls, I mean, you could, I mean, you can try to appeal it. Now, I've known that it's doing good. The mayor and myself have made a few phone calls to a few of our state representatives. Just concerned about the theme of being targeted. So we've not heard back from them, so this is kind of a new thing that just, we just received, as I said last week. So we'll be discussing this a lot more as we go along.
And to follow up with what Corey said, I did reach out to Senator Jaeger and Lieutenant O'Leary about this issue.
So have you actually talked with the elders? What were, what kind of response did you get?
They would get back with me and so I'm still waiting on the response. But yes, I spoke to both of the persons.
Good to know. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Holland. Corey, you're in a note of cases, you said you got two up. How many do we need for a tower support?
So that, that project had five. And we initially started out at thirteen, an initial design. And then just based off some elevation, built some work about where meters were at. We've got that cut down to five. Now, one of them was gonna be on the top of Wind Rock Mountain. And you got another story, probably didn't put that one up. We were gonna be charged around six hundred dollars a month for access fee. So we decided to move those to a different location. So you've got one on top of your Cove tank now, here above Richard's tank, top of the hill here. You're looking at Old Herrmann Highway to get your Cali Town area lower end. Then we're looking at West Outer, which would be over in Oak Ridge, a cell tower. I wish I could remember that, the other road, maybe Garden, Garden or Haven. See, it's a little on down kind of Oliver Springs Highway, up on the hill there. What's the real sharp curves they call it out there there?
Old Valley.
Old Valley. So it's on, it'd be on by Old Valley.
But we need a minimum of how many?
So you, I mean, you're reading about seven hundred and thirty meters right now, which is two up. So the more, the more readers, antennas that you get up, I mean, the more meters you'll be able to read from here. So with, with five up, I think the last propagation study, we'll be able to read about ninety-seven percent of our meters with those five up. The only outline area would be kind of around Dutch Valley.
So we're freeing up two people and that happens? Whenever they're reading?
Yeah, yeah, you would be, yeah.
That'd be good. Yes, it would. They getting closer to the text, no locations?
So the, yes, we still are working on that one, but I know the the auto pay, everything gets set up and working now.
Automatic withdrawal.
Yeah, the automatic withdrawal from checking down the papers, yes, that's all set up now. Ladies and hosts have paperwork, just come in, fill that out, they'll get you set up, taken care of. And they actually run some tests earlier this week, just to make sure everything is working fine and hit once.
That was my next phase, I guess, for the public, is any charges for that or?
No, it's free. That's free.
That's all I got. Thanks, sir. Now, old business, new business, discuss and possibly approve the selling of surplus vehicles.
So you should have resolution two zero two five dash zero eight dash two one. Resolution, Oliver Springs Water Board to declare certain equipment vehicles a surplus property and authorize their sale. Can skip on down now, therefore be resolved by the Oliver Springs Water Board meeting and regular session on the 21st day of August, 2025. That the following vehicles and equipment owned by the Oliver Springs Water Board are hereby declared surplus and authorized for sale. Number one would be a 1997 Chevrolet 7500, single axle and cab and chassis. That would have been one of our older dump trucks that we'd removed the bed from. Mileage is sixty-nine thousand three oh six. Second would be a 1998 Ford F-250 truck with utility bed. Mileage of one hundred twenty-seven thousand eight seventy-four. Third would be a 2007 Ford F-250 truck with utility bed. Didn't have the mileage on that, but also number four would be a 2010 Ford Ranger. And number five would be a 2007 Ford F-250 truck with utility bed. And we'd probably look at putting these on gun deals.
We have a motion to do this. I'm making a motion that we put these on a deal and sell them. We got reserves on them, Corey?
Not at the moment. We probably will look at doing that.
I got a question. Does that single axle with bad guns, does it drive?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
I put a reserve on that. So we have a motion, Mr. Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Van Hooch. Any further discussion? Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yes.
Perry Holland?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Joe. I'm B, discuss and possibly approve budget amendments, Corey?
So ordinance number two zero two five dash zero eight dash two one, a notice to make amendment to the town of Oliver Springs, Tennessee, adopting a budget for operation of the water and sewer department. To attach original budget home, I think it's June 6th. We kind of left these open, hoping the audit would be completed. Also giving your dentist your third party account at times to reconcile some numbers. The big thing, there's not anything changed in the budgets other than in kind of your last page, kind of your cash and ton balance. But with any changes to your budget, you've got to have your amendment taken.
You hit the one highlighted, rated, so how many you're talking about? Eight thousand?
Eight thousand, under the transmittance distribution. Yeah, that's one, that's the end. Didn't have to show any of the original.
So are you adding it, is that what you're doing?
No, basically you just went through and kind of confirmed and updated your one year end numbers. Underestimated, now normally that would say audited for FY23, '24. And it should say audited by FY24, '25. But kind of just confirming those numbers there.
Corey, I see the eleven by seventeen is twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-one, which is the same number as resolution. And then the H Act of fourteen, right behind it, it's twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-one A. Are those one ordinance or the two supplements? This is just simple court apartment procedures, the number of these things.
Uh, the resolution would be the first one, so that would be, would be the?
Twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-one. And then the eight nine five, I mean, the eleven by seventeen budget is twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-one. Would that be A? And then the twenty twenty-five oh eight twenty-one A would be actually B?
So would you have to, the number of resolutions and ordinance different?
I've never done it that way, no. Well, a minimum ordinance has the effect of law. A resolution may be a, an action taken by the government body congratulating somebody, honoring somebody, or putting forth a position statement. Like the body might be against, you know, pornography. You're not passing a law dealing with that subject, you're saying, as a matter of the government body, you're opposed to that. So I've always just gone A, B, C, D, and so on, but I can, I can handle amendments in various ways to solve that problem.
Once we get to the general fund, I think we've started with the A, Bs, and Cs going through there.
Definitely, so.
Okay.
I'll handle the minutes, I'll take care of it.
What is this? This doesn't say.
We need a motion to approve, correct, Corey?
Yes.
All right, a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Honestly, I really haven't seen them, uh, soon. Since we don't have our audit back.
No. No.
But we're?
The auditors may want this before they do the audit. So they can reconcile the audit to what the town's budget should be.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
I see this is your last year's budget, this year's budget.
And you always have to do this, you always have to bring it back.
Yep.
Was there anything notable in here where we were drastically wrong?
No.
That's good.
I mean, the big thing was your, like you're estimating your twenty, FY23s and FY25. Been a big thing on those, which you're estimating for FY24, FY25, so that's your ten thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for having new expenses for the year. Now, that's including five hundred and thirty thousand of depreciation, which is not really a cash expense. So.
Depreciation always throws everything.
Yeah. As far as your capital projects, everything is the same under that.
You have to mention that we accept this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hooch, we have a motion, we have a second. Nothing. Second by Mr. Holland, any further discussion? Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yes.
Perry Holland?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. All right. Any further items, Corey, those done on the agenda? All right, motion to adjourn.
You have, okay, that must be the general fund, yeah. Okay, the others, the others are the general fund, right, Corey?
Correct.
All right.
Yes, sir.
You're right.
Motion to adjourn. It's gonna move, all papers set up? Call the town of Oliver Springs City Council for August 21st is the order. Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Here.
Jeff Bass, Shirley Bailey, Chris Van Hooch?
Here.
Perry Holland?
Here.
Becky Devaney, we've got three out of six, we've got four.
Thank you, Mr. Joe, will you lead us up for a prayer, please?
Our father, we come to you tonight. We pray from the world's sake for a successful negotiation of the end of the war in the Ukraine and in Russia area. We pray that you would be in the hearts and the minds of all those involved where the resolution of this conflict can be achieved. We pray for this body as we deliberate that you will give us wisdom in great abundance. We pray for our first responders and the policemen and the firemen and all those that work to protect us and take care of us from time to time. And we pray you will give them peace and comfort and strength to do their job. We also pray for our many elected officials on all levels of government and the other government folks that they would seek your wisdom and implement your wisdom as they govern our country in our governmental areas. We pray that you would bless this town and bless all that's in it and help us to recognize you as you move among us and ask us to join you in your work. We ask all these things in my son's name.
Amen. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 10th meeting. Motion by Mrs. Van Hooch, we have a second. I'll say, second by Mr. Holland. Any discussion? Any discussion, roll call Joe?
Robert Miller? Chris Van Hooch?
Yes.
Perry Holland?
Yes. Once again, defer to the September meeting, is that correct, Joe?
Yeah, but see, if you still don't have enough that we're here to, maybe you don't feel comfortable in voting on it, that may not be approved. And that's not the end of the world necessarily, but probably the first time since I've been on council. Just because you didn't mean to make the minutes, make the meeting, doesn't mean you can't vote on approval of the minutes. Because if you're voting on approval of minutes, you're relying on the other people that were there. You can watch this on television, that sort of thing. Because it's, you know, it's, it's not that you're saying that you know absolutely a hundred percent fact that these minutes are accurate because you were here. You just believe they're accurate based on the totality of their circumstances, even if you don't.
Could we put something out that, for you, we missed and we watched on TV, that would at least be?
It's on three or four, the traditional tapes are lots of times in Texas, the red one.
I could have Dudley send us a mail link, I could send it, and share with everybody.
It plays every Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, and just record it. With the cartoons.
For sure. They still do it. All right, anybody from the audience that'd like to come forward and speak, go right ahead, just come up to the podium, state your name and what items of business you have.
Hello, guys, how are we tonight?
Good.
Good. I have a couple of things here. Several of the businesses I have talked and we think that if we had a sign of both ends of the four lane of businesses that were downtown, that that would help us get people off the four lane, you know, and down there to see what's down there. I know we would have to have that approved through the state. And they're willing to go in with me if it costs anything to have it done. I haven't talked to all of the businesses, but I did talk to several of them. And I don't know what I need to do or if, just to submit that, or what you guys think about that.
I told you yesterday, I would, we'll get with T-Dot and get the approval for a sign. If you have anything you'd like to submit sign wise, we could get a price for it and find out. I do know this, I was telling Corey this yesterday. Do you know how much those two signs on each end of the town cost? The, the blue ones that say welcome to OS, does anybody know how much those cost, by chance?
Probably like thirty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, goodness.
They were seven thousand dollars.
You're kidding?
Those two signs.
Last I heard, three hundred dollars.
No, 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 they were paid for by grants. Seven thousand dollars. So we'll do all the legwork.
Will they let us make a sign that is not a state highway sign and give us approval to put it up?
Would that have to go plan and commission on Caliber sign laws?
It, it would, but if it goes in the states right away, it's got to be approved by T-Dot. Oh, yeah. Yeah, and there have been other businesses who have tried this and then subsequently failed and somehow it got blamed.
Years of help from the downtown merchant association, they put up signs on both ends. I was coming down to city hall one day like I normally do, and T-Dot had a mowing crew out there and they cut the sign down and took the back of the truck. And Mark Ruffner was president of the downtown merchant association, and I told him about it, he'd been blaming me. Finally convinced him, he got the truck, drove out there, and just lay the back of their truck, he cut it down.
So, again, we'll do the legwork, I have no problem.
I know it's discussed in the past, but I put one there going toward Wind Rock. That curve right there, but I don't know what happened to it. T-Dot or crew would pay for it.
They'll tear it down.
They will.
Now, those signs right there, that's where we put our project signs, that's actually all the highway.
Really?
Yeah.
Because, you know, that's hurting the town's revenue. I mean, if they don't know what's down here, they're just gonna go right on through. So.
Would the option be to put one off the right of way, it would leave it on the other way to be?
Oh, yeah.
Because, I don't know how many feet that is, but yes, that's your question.
If they tend somebody to consider?
Yeah, definitely.
If you find somebody that will allow it or whatever. Or you want to put one on each end of town?
Yes.
Come in towards the town.
Yeah, I think that would be, oh, yeah, good for us.
Sure.
Especially with Chris coming in, going to the hotel, I mean, they need to know that that's here, not just where I'm at. So. But the other thing I had was I'm trying to put together a Labor Day fest downtown. I'd like to do it next Saturday on the 30th. And I have talked to several people about that. It would be from four to seven in the afternoon. We would have a peach publer contest, so anyone you know that does some good baking. And maybe Mr. Laxton would be our judge. I don't know. But I have about 11 vendors who are interested in coming, and that's just by me being on the phone one day. Because this was kind of a short, I didn't know if anyone else was going to do anything. But I think Labor Day is very important. I think we should recognize, you know, our city employees, you know, officers because they do take care of us and watch our businesses down here. But, you know, if, if we could get that, and I asked the mayor here if he would do a speech for us as far as the appreciation. I would have some music down there. And I'd like to ask if maybe we could get maybe a, for the services in town, maybe get an ambulance, a fire truck, police car, maybe the two monsters that are out there. I really don't know what they're called, but I think that would be neat. And maybe the game truck. But I've got some of the classic cars coming too, if this would be okay. Block the road.
What kind of vendors, collect food or?
Well, a couple of my things, some are sweets actually, like desserts. Some of them are like Avon and Mary Kay or crafts and, you know, just different types. And I have asked Mr. Devaney if she wanted to be open that day, she's not answered me. So I have, I would have to have some food, anything, you know, people get hungry. So I have asked a couple of vendors to come.
Mayor, we'd rate Herrmann has their Labor Day festival 10 till 4 that day, so they got 180 vendors coming, so I don't know if he can grab any more or not. They may come on down here.
Just come on down.
So that, that is on Sat, okay.
That's Monday.
Saturday, that's Monday.
You're saying?
A Saturday.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, I did, I thought Saturday might be better for everyone, so.
I apologize, yeah.
But yes, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Dees.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
How are we today?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm with the American Legion, we've got, Ms. Grace Woods here, she's with the DAV. Well, we're coming to you now and trying to give you just a preliminary on, we've been together meeting. We're looking at doing Christmas in City for the Kids this year. We've got the VFW, the DAV, and the American Legion, they're all gonna work together on this. And this is not one about the individual organizations, this is about the kids. The only thing we're looking at doing is, Ms. Ruby has one story this, about 10 years ago, and her name is to be recognized for. The DAV is, we've topped the building down there. And when we get more of how much that we're looking putting in and age groups and all, we're gonna come back to you again and bring it back in front of you, let you know exactly what's going. We would love to have the city in with, so.
Well, I'll tell you right now, just coming right out of the gate, I'm gonna give you a thousand dollars donation. So, I did last year, I'll do it again this year. And I don't know, I got my checkbook with me right now, but I'll get with you tomorrow. And so, me personally, my wife and I, and we'll see if the city maybe can put a little bit, something in there as well.
All right. Like I said, we want to get more at what, you know, how big we're gonna go with it, or how small it'd be, whatever. That's a central location down there, able to get people in and out, not have to worry about the hill up there with the Legion and traffic and everything, like we did before. So, just trying to look out for everybody in luck. And Ms. Grace, you got anything you want?
Thank you. We have a couple of additional things we'd like to discuss.
Absolutely, yeah, go ahead.
But like you said, when we get more information about those details, we'll bring it back hopefully next month. But we are wanting to make more awareness to all of the surrounding communities and counties, Anderson Morgan Road, which is what we as the DAV serve, to get younger veterans in and older veterans to help that they need, that they don't know that they're entitled to. Kell and I are both chapter service officers, so we help veterans, whether they can come down to us to help them with their benefit claims, or we go to their homes. So, really getting the word of mouth out, we wanted to see how advertising around here and around town to get us out there for our local veterans.
Do you have a website?
We do. Well, we have the dmv.org, which is the official, national website, yes, and, but we also, so when you go into that, you would go to Tennessee and then Tri County, and then that pulls up our individual page, which isn't updated yet, but it will be soon. But the contact information and everything is the same. We are open every Tuesday from 11:00 to 4:00, and we're available by appointments for veterans to come in as well.
Well, there may be some way that we could put a link on our town's website to yours.
Oh, that would be great, so I can...
Provide that information.
Yes.
We think we could do that.
Okay, awesome. And then I know they had mentioned a festival for Labor Day, August 30th, but I wanted to bring it up and see if it was possible. I had spoke to Chief Laxton about doing either a September 11th, which falls on a Thursday, I believe, so maybe on a Friday in honor of all of those that have served and gave all, you know, and maybe do like a memorial book, and start working on that for Memorial Day for next year. So, it's a lot, but just trying out there to get those names out there so that people are remembered, those that gave all. Let's see. Yeah. And then...
So, it's kind of in line with the facilities for in recognition of Ms. Ruby and like the three different entities coming in, is a winter wonderland festival in the community?
Yeah, so we do a Christmas festival. Charlie, she's not here, she's the one that oversees that. Robert was the one who wanted it done, so we kind of made it all happen. But Charlie, I mean, listen, we would love to team with you, but Charlie Bailey.
Charlie Bailey?
Yeah.
And I don't know if I have, like, the stuff like ice skating, like where I'm from in a small town in Ohio, like rural Appalachia, like on the Kentucky border, they have like a portable, I mean, like this is through like Crystal Ohio is where it's at, and they bring in a portable ice skating rink, and they bring in the snow machines and everything. And I was like, that would be wonderful here, so.
So, I think, I think you were, I've heard Charlie mention that this year. But what I'll do is, I've got, Gracie, I'm pretty sure I've got your number, but I'll make sure that I get you in contact with Charlie. And she's not here, back to school, it's just kicking off, football's kicking off tonight, and her son plays. And Ms. Becky Devaney's not here because they were feeding the football team tonight, so, but, yeah, okay, I'll show up, sorry.
No, that's good. And then we did have a question in regards to veterans and the funding that comes from the state to the, then they filter it down to all the cities. Where, do you guys have that listed as to where those funds are allocated to, or what those funds that come from the state for veteran programs goes to?
I'm not aware of that. We never see.
Right, the city doesn't.
No, we don't get them as far as I know. We never have.
That's something that we need to work on then.
Yeah.
Because the funds are definitely there, and we just got back from National to say with American Veterans, and they said that the way that it works on the tier system, she's the finance person, so.
So, but when funds are federally funded down to the state, normally they're funneled down to like, federal goes to the state, and then it's funnel down to county level.
County and city.
So, it's like, yeah, so like, if there's money that's, where's it allocated to, and like, okay, so is our little towns, and I hope I'm not opening a whole book of worms, but it's like, okay, is Oliver Springs entitled to some of that money to bring it to the community for the veterans? And it's like, if we are, then do we have to apply for grants? Do we have to apply, how do we apply for that to bring it to the local veterans, to you guys?
It will, now, I don't know for 100%, but I would think what you just said about applying for grants, that's what we'd have to do. And I would love to do it. I mean, my wife's a veteran, she's 15 years active right now, just started year 16. So, I mean, woman of heaven and earth, I mean, she is a soldier first kind of gal, that's a fact. So...
That'd be great. Because we have a lot of, you know, the three entities of our organizations and...
Well, the first, it would be identifying the agencies that would be contacted. And then once you do that, you identify the areas that the grants would serve.
Yeah.
Or the projects the grants could serve. If the town has no projects, the town may not be eligible to apply for it. It may be that the town could apply on behalf of the DAV or the AMVets or whoever it may be, but you just, I mean, you know, it's an art to apply for these grants.
Yeah. And you are correct, we would have to identify like projects that they would go for or towards, or, yes.
Well, here's the biggest thing that we have, especially being in rural Appalachia, is veterans who, I'll give you an example that we just had that we all collabed on. We had a veteran who passed away suddenly, and the wife was waiting to get approval for grant, for her, it's called a DIC, it's the death benefit, so that she could pay for her rent and all that. She went in eviction 90 days in a row because she was still waiting on her claim to be paid. So, like that service money, like we all collabed to try to keep her from getting evicted from her home. She had enough money to pay like her standard bills, but to pay her mortgage or her rent. And property management took over and they were just keep slapping her every month with eviction notice. And they're still waiting, even though it was expedited, but with everything going on. You know, that's kind of the kind of example, I'll give you like project, if a veteran needs help with, if their water lines broke, or if they have, like their house caught on fire, so.
Yeah, I would, let's work together, see what we can do. And, I mean, I'd love to be able to get 10,000, 50,000, 100,000 dollars, I mean, whatever. So, I will apply for it, I promise you that.
I just wanted to give examples just so you have an idea of like what that money can go for.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Ms. Gracie, could you shoot me her contact information, and I'll just, I'll pass it along to my wife, or to Charlie, get y'all in the way.
Could you give us your name, something?
I'm Mac Broden.
Mac Broden.
That's Gracie Woods.
And I'm Kell Brown.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Kell, yeah, it's Kell, if I go by Kell.
Okay. And your last name?
Brown, called.
What's your name?
Brown, Brown.
Brown?
Brown.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor update real quick, high school football starts tomorrow.
Woo!
So, Oliver Springs hopefully going to embrace or embark on a historic season. If OS wins seven games this year, they win seven games, they will put a four-year record for the most wins ever in OS history. So, a straighter Bobcats on this year. Tomorrow's game's away, correct, at Egleton? And then next Friday, they're at home. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
So, all right, so there's that. I also wanted to give a shout out to Chief Laxton for finding the city a bucket truck. And wow, what a find for the street department and the police department. You know, when we're cash strapped and we are, you know, finding something like that for our guys to use that they can work safely out of, needs to be mentioned. And so, I want to say thank you.
That was free, wasn't it?
It was, yes.
From federal, from the military surplus?
That's correct, it was. Only thing we had to pay for was shipping, is that correct? Just to have it brought here and trucks up and running, so just want to say thank you for that. And to reiterate what Ms. Disney said about the Labor Day festival, next Saturday from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, correct? 4:00 to 7:00 downtown. So, I'll be making some Facebook posts about that and getting the word around city employees as well. So, I'll hush Cory.
Not a lot. JBS file has been, follow up on a lot of the pavings. We still have not got another quote for Airport Road. Rusty's been trying, I've been trying, because I know these paving contractors are so busy right now, they don't want to mess with giving another quotes. But it's, it's been a struggle getting another quote for Airport Road and actually Cemetery Road as well, because we actually work too. So, we'll still try to follow up on those. JBS Art does have the approval to install the speed tables, speed table on Richard Drive to Midway, Sir Portland. I think it's just those three. But we're just waiting on them to schedule those. That's about all I have right now.
Thank you, Cory.
Mr. Mill?
Yes.
Cory, can we not take that steam engine and go up to Fire Hall and clean that mold and mildew off that building out there?
So, yes, and Chief Bailey, Chief Bailey's here, isn't he? Yeah, so we're actually working on some stuff inside the Fire Hall. We had a little bit of mold and shoe out there we've been working on, but yeah, absolutely, that's something we can follow up on. And we're actually looking to have possibly replacing the roof, part of the guttering and the facing there. So, yeah.
Okay.
When's the last time you heard anything from Anderson County about sidewalks that's supposed to be going down?
Oh, it is held up by T-deck.
Yeah.
Being held up by T-deck, because part of it, there were two potential routes for the sidewalk to go, and one was on the other side with, say the other side, right there by through City Gas and Go. And one of them was this side, on the school side, and you have the little wetland right there. And T-deck has stalled it, they just, they're sitting on it. Will it approve it? Will not? That's serious.
I didn't build a bridge, Crosby.
No, I talked to Terry about that two weeks ago. Yeah, 2.2 million dollar project?
Yeah.
Just stalled.
So, you know, they surveyed the other side of the road and laid it out, like Stummer.
Yeah. So, I texted her today about another issue, and whenever she responds, I'll ask her again. But about two weeks ago, we talked about it, that's what it was, stalled by the end.
That's all I got this time, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Van Hood?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get quotes, and there's not any available. But at the same time, the quote that we had for Airport Road was so low, I mean, such a good price. I wonder if the wisdom of waiting for more quotes and letting that get away from us. You know, losing that opportunity. I really have a problem with that idea.
Good counsel, prepare that to be an emergency and approve the proposed scheme.
So, as long as you've done your due diligence in trying to obtain three quotes, that needs your personal policy.
And we have, and we don't?
You kind of have.
We kind of have, or we have?
No, we have, it's been, it's been a month and a half.
Well, if you want to make the motion, I think I can get Cory to put down everything he's done for due diligence, the council finding that he's done due diligence.
I don't have that in front of me right now. What was that quote? Do you remember?
Hundred and ten thousand, hundred and twelve thousand.
Somewhere in there. It was a really good price. And it was because they're in the area. And they've already got all their equipment and everything. I made the motion that we go ahead and accept that quote from JBS Art and instruct them to pave.
Roger's Group.
I'm sorry, Roger's Group, was it Roger's Group? Okay, instruct Roger's Group to go ahead and begin the paving project on Airport Road when they are available.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Mr.
That's how State Street ain't from two.
Yes.
That process is too good to pass up.
So, Airport Road bid price is 120,410 dollars. And that would be from the city limits to Midway Street. So, coming from this direction where the, kind of the V is right there from the church. So, from Midway to the city limits.
And we're talking about putting speed tables out there, you know, I mean, let's get everything fixed.
Yeah, so we'll put the speed tables on hold.
Yeah.
Until it gets paved, and then the speed tables, correct?
And we need to fix any water lines.
That is 100% correct.
Water lines fixed out there, the thing that runs across.
Tell Scott that's a priority. Yeah.
How is that?
We ain't, we're not gonna pave it and then cut it. All right, so we got a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
How long that been good for, Cory?
So, that is probably 30 days.
Most of them 30 days.
I don't see it from here, but like you said, most of those are 30 days, so I mean, I can redo that. So, one thing, we're still waiting on Roger's Group to paint Windrock Road and the parking lot at the middle store, or the academies. And then on top of that right street.
Correct.
So, they've not really moved in here yet.
Which should be just about any day. While I talk a case of a man about the school, so.
And that's why we don't want to let them get moved out of here, finish and move out, and then we're not gonna, that won't even begin to bring them back.
Have you done due diligence on the Windrock Road too?
Yeah, we've already freed that, oh, yeah.
We're ready to.
We're just waiting on.
That went through last minute.
Okay, I thought, I thought we were waiting on the V, but I couldn't.
No, we got the three for that one, so. All right, motion, second, discussion. Roll call.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Truce Van Hooft.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Yes.
That's exciting.
That's a, that's a big street.
That we're going to, 2006, let it be known, 2006 was the last time before this mayor, this city manager, and this council, this will be road number three and four that will have been paved. Like, oh, well done, well done. So, there you go, thank you. So, you know, it's just, we're not a big town, all right? We don't have millions of dollars, we don't have an interstate that runs through us.
That's why we have to take advantage of an opportunity like that when it comes along.
So, you know, that's a big deal, and I want everybody to know that's a big And I want everybody to know that's a big deal. So, could, I wish we could do every road in all of Springs. Absolutely, I do. And I, nobody has to tell me that Cemetery Road is a bad road. I know it is. And I promise, we're, we're trying. But, alright.
Well, I think we talked about getting an estimate on Cemetery Road, just to see. Since, I mean, do you have anything yet on Cemetery Road?
Not yet.
No.
Not yet.
Let's, we'll go ahead and try, I mean, since, see if we can find some, at least have some quotes, and what it's gonna cost.
For sure.
And if, if it comes out that's something that we can do, we can put it through in the next meeting. If we can afford it.
Anything else, Ms. Van Hooch?
No.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hall.
Last week, last meeting, we talked about the water rescue plan. Do we have anything on paper that people could review?
Chief Bailey? I really hate to find out when I'm floating.
No. So, the, as I was speaking with Chief, or Chief, yeah, Chief Mayor. So I spoke with Mayor Steel there not too long ago. The plan that we operate under is Anderson County mitigation plan. So kind of county-wide plan overall view. It's at 50,000 foot view. Alright, who's responsible for what? As far as us, right now, we are seeing the people to get trained in it. My first call, if we do have something like that, is Anderson County, Morton County, or Rome County water rescue squad, respectively. The problem is, is that most with water incidences are regional, not just local. So the plan in place is, right now, that we do call for those resources. Oak Ridge does come down, they have personnel, they do not have a team. The only regional, and what I mean by regional is like team, a certified regional team that we have right now that's in this region is not SUC. Not City, Chattanooga, or Cook. That's a little bit longer resources, I was playing there and we've, we've been talking, that's an hour out. So thirty minutes out is our local team. Our team is trying to get up and running. It's not, when I say a team, it's basically a tank rescue, which is what we can do right now. And, you know, that, that's just something that's not been on the radar for us in the sense. The boat ops, like you'll see, like coming out of Texas, things like that, that is a last resort. And we don't have the funds to be able to do that. That's where, as I was speaking with Mayor and as I spoke last council meeting, is we are teaming up with all of the county as a whole. So, for example, we're putting eight people through the train. Marlowe's putting eight people through the train. Marlowe does have a boat and capabilities that's local. Because a lot of our jurisdiction overlaps in those trouble areas that we know of. Wind Rock Road, Airport Road, Midway Drive is its own. A lot of our stuff, though, we've actually mitigated by putting up barriers. And that's actually almost, I don't want to say eliminated, because people still move them, but it is almost eliminated of our rescue type calls. So as far as that, that, it's still a plan, planning in progress.
You haven't had a plan like notification? So you like, we got downtown, we got the poor lane, we got the-
So like for our guys or for like the general public?
Yeah.
General public, so 911 and Chief Lacston can be kind of tied in the business, because this kind of hits both of us. We have reverse 911 that goes through the county system. Each EMA, Rome, Morton, Anderson, all have a notification system. And I'm not certain, you, you still got the one too. So we've still got ways of getting information out that, hey, by the way, in these areas, you're in these areas, get down our ground, try to evacuate. Problem is, is the town of Oliver Springs is in a historical flooding area. You know, whether you're on Sleepy Hall Road or downtown, you're in historical flooding. So a lot of our notifications come in. What we've been really actively trying to advise people is that we know, we know that notifications by phone, text message, things like that, they do come out. But sometimes they're delayed. You're relying on other technology. So what we're telling everybody is to get a weather radio. And take heed to the warnings. A lot of people see flash flood warning, they're, ah, that's somewhere else.
Yeah.
Oliver Springs, ah, that's, that's a warning. And it can happen pretty instantly. So that's some of the-
Although, no, if it'd be quick, I've stayed at one time from over the railroad here downtown and it was, you know, Sunday one minute.
Sunday one minute and then water, yes. And the problem is, we're downstream from all kinds of things. So things can happen upstream in Morton County and we, we see the results of it. Because water does run down.
I'll buy you a jacket.
I'll just mention to, to Jason, to Mayor, that is there any such thing as getting any kind of grants for those weather radios? Like, could you get that and give it to your citizens who might not be able to afford those radios?
So I know Rome County was working on something. The Rome County EMA was working on something, because I've got one of our members that worked there full-time. He was talking about it not too long ago. I know Anderson County was working on something. I can contact Varrass, which is the EMA director currently. And Steve, he is actually, what's his name, he is currently resigning his position as EMA director though. So that, that might be up in the air and see who people don't work with there. But I can work with them pretty, pretty certain.
Can you see if there's any, any money out there available where we could supply people who maybe, maybe can't afford the radios?
Absolutely.
Opportunity to, to have them?
Absolutely, I know.
Something really good to difference citizens.
I know Rome County is working with those. So I don't know how that was working, but I'll, I'll work with them and see where they got it.
Anything we can do for our citizens?
What level could we go to? Like a child abduction where you get it on your phones and stuff like that? Any way we could get notification available, needs to do that?
So we do have that right now. That's, that's through the P D. As long as the person signs up for it. That's the big key.
So we have no access to that? Thank you, sir. Anything else, Ms. Van-
We give our back taxes, debt straightened out any year?
I'm not sure about that.
I mean, I have, the last update I got from the city attorney was we were still waiting for the carpe master to give us a date. Which is super frustrating. Oh yeah, that's just not sure of this.
Well, to give us some background, whenever you file the lawsuit, whatever date it's filed, and I have no idea when it was filed, you have to personally serve each and every defendant. And if you can't find him, you have to publish a newspaper and say that's once a week for four weeks, which is thirty days, and you gotta wait thirty days. So then you get a court date from the chancellor and the chancellor will be setting cases for trial. Probably the, you know, that what's called docket sound in the first or second Wednesday in November. And if the tax case is ready for a hearing where everybody's got their notice, proper notice, then the city attorney will probably get a court date. So court is extraordinarily slow in one sense of the word. It's because it's a, it's a systemic situation you have to deal with.
Because I know we got two different levels. We got the ones that are past due for years and then we have the ones that are past due for this year.
And just because you get a judgment, doesn't mean you get any money. Because if nobody bids the property in a tax deal, the city can bid it in. And then the city owns it and if somebody wants to buy it, they've got to pay back, back, back from the city, or remitment from the city.
I can promise you, the conversation is had often, I promise. Listen, I pay my taxes, I'd say the majority of the people sitting in this room pay theirs. And I expect everybody to pay theirs as well.
I totally agree, it's, it's a problem.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Chief-
Yes, one more thing I forgot. Cory.
Yes, sir.
When did we hear from Performance Services and say, left us and owe us all this?
So, I actually talked to them this week. And they're still wanting to try and work something out with us on some other project. Basically just to really try to put it off. And I know, Mayor knows why. But, I mean, basically it's just, well, basically there's nothing there. It was notified and once council made their decision and just kind of drug out on their end.
Because we done paid the bill.
Not forty-three thousand.
Paid the building, but not paid the building forty-three thousand additional.
We've got the invoice. That though, back in Chief Mayor-
That is probably that March.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
They're supposed to give us the plan.
They're supposed to give us a bunch of stuff.
And invoice.
So they're holding, withholding?
No, they're not withholding it. They just never sent us the invoice.
They've never sent us the invoice? For the project they finished?
Yeah. No.
No.
Oh, for the forty-three thousand?
And you all, or council decided-
What is the point of that?
There's, there's more to the story.
Yeah, but we, we nailed up our end, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, we made it black and white.
I'm not privy to the negotiations, but I'm speculating, they make their living by selling services to the towns and cities and counties and whatnot. And we did not buy and take their million-dollar projects that they proposed. And so they have a plan B to offer other plans that might be less expensive. And they're wanting the staff and open town council approve those and staff and town council are not interested. But Performance Services hasn't given up. I could be wrong, but that's what I'm estimating on the outside looking-
Joe, how long you been doing this since 1985 or 86?
Eighty-five.
Okay. So Joe's been around the block a time or two, and Joe may be speaking the truth here, but I, I'm not going to confirm nor deny what-
I'm not asking you to.
But, you know.
Because he, he asked, Teresa asked the question, how much are you willing to spend? And Teresa says, whatever we spend, we have to borrow and we're not going to borrow anything. And he said, why? Because his idea is that if we spend a million dollars, he'll figure out a way where it doesn't cost a slop more money because we've got all these savings.
Right.
And see, his key project, the street light savings fell through because of lack of his due diligence.
So can we not issue them a open payment? Soon as they'll be on ninety days or?
Yeah.
It's considered paid in full?
I know this.
Yeah.
I probably would let staff deal with it in the thirty to sixty days.
I will say that it's under review right now, but I'll let-
Because if, if they don't, if we don't spend the forty-three thousand dollars, then I'll get the plans.
But, but it needs to go away.
But we were, we were, in the contract, if we decided not to, we got everything, we got the plans, we got the GPS-
And there's no reason to think we wouldn't receive that. There's no reason to think.
They have it behind us, if they just see that sending the forty-three thousand dollar bills was called a conditional precedent, the town pays it and they send us the documents. And Performance Services had billed it.
Right.
And see, forty-three thousand dollars is not a lot of money from a Performance Services standpoint. If they can propose a ta, a project for a hack million dollars that the town council would agree to fund, what if that project may be? And see, they've got other projects that they're trying to sell to management where they can come back to town council, get town council to approve it.
Bottom line was, they didn't make as much money off of us as they wanted.
Well, not only that, it took them nine months to build a building that they said they'd have within forty-five days.
Yeah, and that too.
So.
Which is part of the reason we decided to-
And see, if we send them a check, they could always send it back and say we haven't billed you yet. Just because we sent them a check doesn't mean they'll send all the papers they were entitled to receive. They should, but, you know, they, they want to keep the door open for more business.
Or we could send the check with a letter saying, stating that we hereby have honored all of our terms of our agreement with them. And here's your check for our agreement. And now we would like the plans as agreed upon. We could always do it that way, didn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know, what do you think about that, Joe?
The mayor and the city manager have indicated that they are, got some negotiations going that they feel like it's not appropriate to share at this time. I understand that.
Well, maybe we should let them work that out.
Become comfortable in approaching council on the schedule they feel is appropriate to call for that motion in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't like the idea where they think they got us by the end of the chain, yanking us around.
Now they have.
Well, yeah, they have. They not sent us a bill, six months, eight months. And still coming back with stuff and we said flat out, said no and voted on it.
I would offer this thought, when the gentleman said that CUB wouldn't agree to let them hang lights on there, I caught his attention to the fact that he been due diligence. And I pressed him pretty hard and turned around and walked away.
Oh, I know.
See? So at that point, they may feel like that they're not in the strongest position and they might force us to sue them to give us, give us the documentation. And I, I agree with you, but it's a little bit premature, I think, to make that-
I think it is.
Well, I, I think as long as, if Cory and Jason are still negotiating with them, let's see, let that play out. But, but I think it needs to finish.
I agree, I can hear.
I mean, I think that we should let them finish whatever they've got going. But then, they need to know that they have the full support of council.
I will say-
That we want the project, we want it finished.
I would seem to think by the first meeting in September, that will be done.
Good.
So.
So it might be able to take care of itself here in a couple of weeks.
And that's-
And I would think there may be no more action by town council, because they send the bill, we just send the check and then we get the documents.
Correct.
Yeah. Might be a report by staff, but, you know.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay. Good point. Good point. Chief Lacston?
I don't have anything for Council now, so if you have any questions, I'll be thinking submitted to you.
I got helpful. The East Trike County where the stock warrant, or codes, where they stopped work on the little car lot where the tires was?
Yes, sir.
I see two different things going over, filling in dirt in the back, then they have the mess in the front. Any way they could get the mess in the front released or is that part of the big-
No, so from what I've been advised by Rome County Code's offices, is that for demolition permit for a site that old, that they have to keep everything on site for asbestos testing. And they halt most of it off, so they are basically taking you the case away from Rome County Code's state department involved and have a soft work order. So I don't know what kind of testing they're going to do, what kind of assessment they're going to do towards the, that's, that's all the state's thing to say.
So that, several people asked.
Yeah, they told them to stop and don't touch nothing else.
The other ones, uh-
That was the old car lot on the ride issue, going to Oak Ridge?
Yeah, Oak Ridge.
We had the one residence, no, some of the heaven's report on Spring Street. We keep having to tell her, I'm going to yard and haul stuff off. Any way we could strengthen our roads or something to get that in force and her not having to babysit them?
So which property, are you talking about Westbury?
Me, yeah, Westbury.
Okay. Uh, I will check into that, if-
I know she's always had the grass problem and she's got-
She is, but the, the problem is- She is, but the, the problem is, is I believe every ride up has been something different. So she'll water up for high grass, she'll remove it. Uh, I think then there was a couch issue, she drove it up, then she removed it, then turned it into grass again. And it, it's, it's a work in progress. Some people, it's easier to work with than others. And this one is just kind of a reoccurring issue. And this is not an enhancement. There's, you know, like you have in like DUIs, you've got first offense, second offense, some for it. You don't really have that in the property codes.
But we can't make it first, second, second.
You could, but it would take anything that we would, you know, kind of have a ordinance change. So that would have to be recommendations, you know, talk with them, pass the city attorney to see if, if, you know, if there's any kind of compounding charges like that. But the problem what you run into is, is like when they pass a state law, they allow, you know, it, it to be a certain class of instrumenter, then it could bump up to another one. So then the fines and the date ranges can change. However, I know for, you know, twenty years I've been here, the judges always told me that, you know, it's set of what they say the ordinance violation can be. And there's not really that I know of any enhancement to that. Is that where it can compound to be more for a second or third offense, correct?
Uh, from a constitutional standpoint, the most you can impose in city court in terms of fines, fifty dollars.
Say something.
Now, you can have a penalty, say of a hundred dollars for terror laws, which is not a fine. But there's been several Tennessee Supreme Court cases that have said that when you get a penalty of five hundred dollars, the court will look very closely to see if that is a fine. A, a fine camouflage as a penalty to get around the constitutional requirement of whether the, the facts and reasons would justify a, a huge penalty. You know, for example, you file, pay your taxes later and not find money, you have a penalty. And if you have a hundred percent penalty for thirty days later on your taxes, that would not be proper. So the courts will look at that. And Chief is right, we're limited to a fifty dollar fine per citation. And each day would be a continuing violation. So procedurally, if you went out on Monday and wrote violation and owner didn't do anything, the codes officer after about Tuesday can write a second violation and so on. Then they would come before the court. And you might have ten violations where they could be fined fifty dollars per citation for a total of five hundred dollars. But the next question is, would they pay it?
And then what are the bigger things that we've run into before? One judge advised us that this was before, we had one property owner that we had planned, well, then we're just going to go send them every day and write in a citation every day. They quit answering the door. Then what are you going to do? You know, uh, we, at one time, we even had one property owner in this town that advised our codes enforcement, they're not allowing their property owner. We don't have, you know, jurisdictional law to cross on the property lines now. So now you got to catch them out of town, you know, because it's not a criminal act, it's a civil ordinance violation. And so there, there's a lot of things that we've run into like this. One of the best things we had going for us for a while, and I've spoke with the city manager about what we're going to have to put it back out for bid, was when we had the contract services for one. If we had property that meant the property maintenance codes.
Yeah.
We used to call in this company, they would come in and they would clean up the property and then we would assess the bill either for the taxes, uh, certain avenues. But that contract has expired. We've got to put out for requisition again with it. And that's kind of more the city manager's brand than mine.
We may have to crank it back up. If you take our codes persons' report, I bet there's five on there, some on there, kind of ten months. Five same people on there, at least six of the ten sheets every month. So we can't get her to do that, nothing else because she's dealing with the same people. You got a former.
And we had a good idea to come up to the mayor a little while back. There was going to be a little communication committee that had talked about doing resources with some churches and some volunteer youth groups to go around and clean up some of these properties. But there again lies the liability that when I talk to the youth leaders and the mayor, you've got to get permission to build a property to do this. And if they don't allow it, say, you know, like a quarter, that does not want your leader's stuff, you're back in the corner again. So if they don't want help, you can't help them sometimes.
But I don't, I think the caps is are still there. We didn't crack up the heat.
Yeah, or like I said, if we get to the point where, you know, we can put this up for requisition to get a bid, it's been, I don't know, she's had enough violation letters, you know, certified letters. That we could send this crew in to mow the yard if there's debris in the way that they don't mind removing so that they can mow, you know, that would be all part of it.
I mean, one person expense is my short example for others that can't play that game too.
But if they go out and spend five hundred dollars cleaning the property and the property owner doesn't want to pay right away, the city's got to pay that five hundred dollars net to the tax bill. And the tax bill may or may not get paid. And then we're back to what Mr. Hall was observing on the back tax collections.
It's not a bad point where when we do get a healthier budget, we're going to have to fund demolitions for, you know, the new process we have moving forward on demo houses. You know, we never, you know, lose this money out of budget to do it. If we're going to clean up towns, you know, be able to send these companies in to clean up the properties, you add Mike on the tax bill, we're going to have to be able to fund this. But as I said, it's a separate project and they can get as expensive as you want.
We're speaking up there with the other last ones on Haven. You know, they, them two houses parted down, but one's clear, uh, still there. We're fixing it in or we got to tear it down or?
They're going to tear it down, but it's, it's turned into an insurance battle of who calls whose. One that you called mine or did mine cause yours? And they're kind of battling it out. One insurance company was a little bit more proactive than the other, and that's kind of where it goes.
While you're up here, Chief, I wanted to ask you, are you fully staffed right now? You've got all the officers you need or?
I'm, we're currently looking for two. We've got put out there. We're, we're looking for the right fit. And at the time, you know, um, you know, I even talked to the city manager the other day. With the amount of officers that no longer want to be in law enforcement and getting out here, having to recruit uncertified, well, that has caused a mass influx on the academies. So right now, if we got the funding and everything to hire new officers, send them to the police academy and put them straight on the road, I would say we couldn't get them on the road until about June of next year. That's a hard way to, to pay someone that is just going to be a shadow. Uh, so then that's when you look for your certified officers, you know, uh, you look at recruitment tools, you look at, you know, trying to pull from other agencies where they're not happy or disgruntled. But when you take our comparable benefits and pay to others, you know, they can ask the question, why? And so that's, that's where we're getting into that point now, you know, being a few years behind on, on officers, that we're getting into that mode. Hopefully it won't continue, but we may end up getting to the point where we're behind and we start losing for other agencies.
Why don't you give us some, some comparables to the agencies in the area? Just to let us know, maybe next meeting, couple of power, power, pay action stacks, such, and I've got it stacked up against.
You say?
Regional area.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief. Chief Bailey.
Got a couple of things on your guys' agenda for tonight. First one was a kind of an August report. It's kind of an update and a, a report over the last few months with all of these months. So, uh, you guys got any questions on that one? Hopefully it's kind of self-explanatory with it. Uh, first thing I got for you guys tonight is kind of continuing out what I discussed a couple of months ago with the purchase of dual certified gear. Uh, we did receive fifty thousand dollars from Anderson County. This is just added on to the current, um, purchase that we've already approved. Uh, there was a price increase of about a hundred dollars per set. That happens about every July. And so I just need approval to purchase eleven more sets. That puts everybody in a set of dual certified tech rescue wildland gear.
I want the motion, the motion by Mr. Miller, we have a second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Van Hooch. Any discussion? What is dual certified?
So all of our gear is certified for certain things. Um, like for example, structural firefighting gear is thicker, it's meant for structural firefighting. Dual certified gear, wildland firefighting, we worry about heat exhaustion, things like that. The dual certified gear is for technical rescues like vehicle extracations and if I'm finding wildland fire up on the mountain. Uh, so it protects me for that versus notification and that.
So it makes you cheaper for you, it does keep paying.
It is cheaper. It puts us in, you know, we're getting most made purple. Uh, in other words, we're able to cover several different exposures that we may have with one set of gear versus, you know, having three sets of gear out there.
And this won't mean that all of our, we'll have?
Everyone on will have their set of, uh, I think we've always called it extrication gear, but extrication wildland gear, everybody will have a set of.
Who's was having the?
Twenty currently. Um, twenty-two with all's, two of those sets was to somebody else, so that just left.
Do you have twenty right now?
Right now.
You're looking for ten, Ron?
Always.
We're ready to vote?
Yeah, motion, second. Roll call.
Uh, Robert Miller.
Here.
Chris Van Hooch.
Yes.
Very hot.
Yeah.
Uh, the second thing I got for you guys tonight is a donation of our surplus radio equipment. Uh, we've been blessed. Um, we got blessed by Anderson County. Uh, they have purchased new, new radios. BD donated radios to us that also outfitted the entire department, moved us up to the new radio system. Our old radios are VHF, is what Morgan County utilizes. Want to donate all, the majority of those radios to Morgan County Fire and Rescue Association, which would then donate it out to the different volunteer fire departments and rescue squad there. They're desperate to get some, some radio equipment.
Make the motion.
Motion, second, all in one. Motion by Mr. Miller and by Ms. Van Hooch. I have a question up just.
Yes, sir.
If these trunk line radios go down, what are we going to use for backups?
So we can go radio to radio on those?
You can?
Yes.
What's the range covered?
Uh, I can talk from here to the house.
Can you?
Yes. Yeah, they've got really good radio reception and then there's several different backup sites within the system. And then you've also got, um, several like house sites that can come in and they can actually pull online and put, for heater permits in downtown.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Thank you, bud.
Hello? You got a roll? Roll call.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yeah.
Very hot.
Yes.
All right, uh, the last item I got is more of an information piece. Um, it's an information piece not only for you guys, but also for everybody that's in town. Uh, roughly, see here, this was in two thousand and twenty-two. State of Tennessee adopted a permitting process for mobile food trucks. So if I come, if I get a complaint towards a local food truck and I go on site, I ask for, I really ask one question, one question on them. Do you have a state permit, fire prevention permit, to be able to operate your food truck? Uh, there is a process to that, that's what I ask for. If they don't have that permit, I have to shut them down. Uh, so that's, that's something within the fire code requirements is there. But this is a point of, of information that the permit is required. Uh, it's required for fire safety and electrical code compliance. So it pretty much touches every food truck that's on, uh, that's out in operation. Uh, if a food truck is to operate inside of town, that's one thing I will do. I'll ask if you've got a permit from the state. Uh, I had one gentleman give me their health department permit, which is another permit that they have to have. I said, thank you, I need your fire permit from the state fire marshal's office. Uh, fire marshal's office is the only one that issues that permit and that permitting process. That's the only thing I'm looking for, uh, when you have that. If you have that, then I look for the second compliance part, which if you read on down and kind of see the checklist that's there for that, I, I'll check that. If you're in compliance, have a nice day. Uh, but if you don't have a permit, I stop at that point and I kind of give some guidance and kind of get to it, but I shut you down for today on that. So, uh, just once you guys kind of get aware, uh, that that is in place, uh, there's no permitting process that we could do. All we can do is check. Uh, we can't get in charge for it, but if there's like an event, um, festival, you know, we have several of those throughout the year. Just set up on the side of the road, set up this business, you know, on the side of the road, it has to have a permit and it has to be the state fire marshal's permit.
How difficult is it to get that permit?
Uh, they get online, they register the business, they, they schedule an inspection. The inspection is the fire inspector for this area, he's a regional guy. Um, the one that we in particular dealt with, within three days, uh, the person had their permit and was ready to go. So they're, they're very receptive of it. So they, they try to get it done pretty easily.
Well, I've seen some of it, have a mixture of propane cooker, then they got generators which has gas too.
So there's certain rules, what, how far they got to stay apart, um, uh, how far, you know, any kind of flammable materials got to stay within there. Most of them are like twenty-five feet depending on, uh, for instance, if you have a propane cylinder, it has to be mounted and it has to be labeled. Um, you know, just various items like that. Uh, if it's got a equipment system inside, it has to be inspected. Now, you know, we look for the inspection package and they'll say, well, it's here, I need the inspection package. It's a third party inspection, but we don't do those inspections, we look for the third party. So, um, that's a liability on us to, on that. So that's just some of the information I've got for you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
No old business, new business discussed. Budget amendment for the drug ton.
Court. All right, um, there's been no changes other than the cash, um, cash balance and stuff. So we're just on two zero two five dash zero eight dash two one D. Uh, we're just making a kind of all the strange off the fiscal budget for use of drug investigation and control fund fiscal year two zero two five through two zero two six.
Basically got your pass ready here. Any discussion?
All right.
Pretty, pretty straightforward, Corey, I mean.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's no.
So the motion to, uh, the budget amendment?
Make the motion.
Second. Motion, second. Motion on this Van Hooch, second. Would you call him? Any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yeah.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yes, very hot.
Yes. Item D, budget amendment for state street.
Order is under two zero two five dash zero eight dash two one C. Order is to make amendment to the town all the strange Tennessee adopting budget for use of state street paid funds for fiscal year two zero two five through two zero two six. Again, basically this is what we passed and on the, or in June.
You guys have any questions?
Big thing there is, um, current, we're beginning available funds July first, you have two hundred and seventy-one thousand. You're going to use a hundred and forty-seven thousand of that to pay roads with Airport Road being one of those. And wait, roll.
Motion.
Make the motion.
Amendment by Ms. Van Hooch, second. Second, second, by Mr. Hall, any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yeah.
Very hot.
Yes. Thank you, Joe. Um, and last item along with the, discuss amendment for the general fund.
So this also sets your tax rate, uh, for this year. So again, your current tax rate was one point three three five six. Your, uh, tax rate for two thousand twenty-five is zero point seven two seven nine seven. Uh, looking at your general fund budget, uh, which is two zero two five dash zero eight dash two one eight. Order is to make amendment to the town all the strange Tennessee adopting the annual budget for fiscal year, getting July first, two zero two five.
for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, beginning June 30th, 2026.
Any discussion?
So this is based on this new tax rate, right, Corey?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I make the motion.
Motion on Miss Van Hook, second. Which one do we?
Then here. Yeah, this is, but here, this is our tax rate. We've now set our tax rate. We didn't change, you know, because of these regulations.
Oh, damn. And also, second on this for Hall.
These are, these are the numbers.
Any further discussion on the wrong thing? Roll call, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Chris Van Hooch.
Yeah.
Terry Hall.
Yes. All right.
I think we should note that we did not raise our taxes.
Yeah, very true, very true. And for all the naysayers, you see, city council has the authority to reappraise or appraise your value of your home. That's not true. That is by the county, by the state.
And we, we worked really hard to keep our.
We did.
Taxes not crazy this year.
For sure, so, all right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, put this on the next agenda to be discussed. And that's the inspection report from Wrong County Code Zone, the Woodboy Girls Code, please, sir.
Okay. We can do that. Is that two weeks? We can have?
Mm-hmm.
We surely can, on September the 4th, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. We can, it can be added, so.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn, so move. All pairs say aye.